We're the Franklin Regional School Committee of the whole meeting for January 23rd, 2023. We're in executive session for personnel and legal issues from 6:45 till just 7:30. And Dr. Prino, your superintendent's report.
I'm going to move right into this and introduce our high school administrative team to present a number of students this evening.
Good evening. We do have quite a few students. We do have quite a few students that we would like to present this evening. Are our Coca-Cola Scholars Program Scholarship semifinalists. The Coca-Cola Scholars Program is an achievement-based scholarship awarded to students in their final year of high school. Students are recognized for their capacity to lead and serve, as well as their commitment to making a significant impact on their schools and communities. Out of 91,000 applicants, 1,557 students were chosen as semifinalists. Amanda McPhaden, Prinial Varshney, and Grace Wang are three FR seniors who were among them. There are 150 Coca-Cola scholars selected each year to receive $20,000 in scholarships. The 35th class will be named in March of 2023. So our semifinalists, we have two out of the three here this evening. Amanda McPhaden. And Prinial Varshney. Grace was unable to make it this evening, but we will definitely give her her certificate, her certificate tomorrow when we see her at school.
Real quick, can Amanda and Prinial, you'll have to come to the microphone, but tell us a little bit about your future plans.
My name's Prinial Varshney, and in college, I'm looking forward to studying either computer science or going into medicine.
You picked a school yet?
I'm still undecided on the school. I'm still waiting to hear back from some colleges.
Hi, my name is Amanda McPhaden, and I am also currently undecided on the school, but I am pretty set in finance as a potential major. And I hope to also continue giving back, which is a large part of the Coca-Cola scholarship criteria, so, thank you.
So obviously, you're also excellent students. But in addition to that, what are some of your extracurriculars, the things that you do outside of the classroom?
Okay, so I am an athlete representative for the Allegheny Mountain Swimming Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. We give back to kids in the community by teaching kids who otherwise couldn't afford it swim lessons, as well as helping out with mental health resources for students who were struggling during the pandemic, as well as with the balance of student and athlete life. I am the vice president of FR versus Cancer at the high school. I'm also president of the Future Business Leaders of America at our high school. And I am a swimmer on the Franklin Regional High School Swim Team and Whipple Qualifier, state qualifier as well.
Thank you.
I'm on the varsity soccer team, and I also play for the tennis team. I'm percussion, pit percussion section leader for our marching band, so I'm involved with music, too. For STEM activities, I also lead our Science Olympiad and National Science Bowl Clubs, which have both done quite well. Our Science Bowl team, two years ago, made Nationals for the first time in school history, and then placed 33rd. And our Science Olympiad team for the past two years has made it to States each year.
Congratulations to you both.
Good luck on your endeavors for the final round. Hopefully, we'll have three winners here, right?
That would be excellent. Really is an incredible feat that these three were selected as semifinalists. Since Prinial, I told him just to sit right here, actually. We're going to talk about him a little bit more, so he's probably going to end up back at this microphone for a second. But we wanted to take a minute to recognize something really incredible that Prinial did independently in his work. So he attended the American Society of Anesthesiologists' annual meeting in New Orleans, Louisiana, this past October. So the goal of the conference, and I'll speak to it a little bit, let the expert do the talking. It's comprehensive. It provides learners with the opportunity to consider the potential use of new scientific discoveries, which affect the practice of anesthesia. They integrate the latest knowledge of modern procedures, the most advanced therapies and devices into clinical practice. They utilize modern practices, management techniques, and knowledge of issues pertaining to regulation to ensure effective and safe administration and care for patients. And they create a team-based strategy for providing crucial surgical procedures during and following the pandemic. But at this point, I would like to invite Prinial to provide the title of his research and share just a little bit about what he did at the conference, because it's really special.
I'll start just by explaining what the research was, so you get an idea of what actually happened there. So in the past year and a half or so, I interned at a hospital, basically, and completed some research. And my primary role was to do a statistical analysis and then later develop the abstracts and papers, and then the presentation that was actually presented at the conference. So the research itself was about an anesthetic called EXPAREL, which is a liposomal bupropofan, but cutting out the medical jargon. Basically, what that means is it's an anesthetic that is taken orally, but then it gives off its anesthesia slowly over time. So the idea of that is, in a time like COVID, when doctors were basically scrambling to get medical beds open so they can take care of more patients, if we give some people EXPAREL, then they can be discharged from the hospital. In other words, they can leave the hospital, freeing up a hospital bed, and they still receive that anesthetic over time. So it's, they still won't feel pain, and they're still being treated, essentially. So not only does that help the hospital by clearing up the hospital beds, but it also helps the patient, because they spend less time in the hospital, and that means less medical bills overall. So me and the rest of my group, we were looking at the effectiveness of EXPAREL. The manufacturers claimed that it would work for 72 hours after the patient was discharged from the hospital, and we wanted to analyze whether that number was really accurate. So doing our research, we found that actually, the amount of time is 24 to 36 hours. But even though it's less than what they claimed, it still is effective in discharging patients, because they can go a day or a day and a half without having to come back and receive more anesthesia or treatment. So that's the research. And then as a contributor, I had the opportunity to present. So I went to New Orleans and presented there to a group of other doctors and researchers. And yeah, I think it was a great experience. The hands-on research allowed me to see how my actions in STEM can actually be applied to the real world. So I think that's something motivating me for the future, to keep doing things like this. Thank you.
Can I have a question? Can I have a question for you? How did you get involved with this research?
Oh, that's a good question. I was, I was, so I've always loved STEM, and in high school, I did various STEM activities. But I was interested in basically reaching out and looking at what I wanted to get involved in, because I wanted to try to apply, like, the knowledge I had gained to other things. So I reached out to various professors and researchers just online by getting their emails and asking them if they had any opportunities for research or internships, volunteering, whatever it be. And eventually, I got some responses, and that led to this opportunity. Thank you.
Very impressive. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Prinial. And now we can all see why we let him do the talking and not me. All right. So one more, one more student. The administration in the high school would like to recognize this student. Before she receives her diploma, she's actually going to receive an associate's degree. And I have the publicized article from Westmoreland County Community College here. She has earned 60 college credits while in high school. She will receive her associate's degree in May. And when she grad, when she graduates, she plans on pursuing international business with a minor in Spanish. So we really wanted to take a moment to recognize this special and awesome accomplishment for Jacinda Floyd. So come on up, Jacinda.
You gotta say something.
Hi, my name is Jacinda. As he said, I will have my associate's degree before I do complete high school. I'm currently a member of the marching band. I am a Girl Scout. I just recently completed my gold award. And I do a plan to major in international business with a minor in Spanish at either Penn State, Ohio State, or University of Cincinnati. So, thank you.
That's fantastic. Congratulations.
Thank you for being a great example, what some of the other students should look at pursuing. I think personally, that's a phenomenal accomplishment you did, to not only graduate high school, but already have two years of college under your belt. So congratulations.
Couple of questions programmatically. So talk to us about your college and high school classes. Plus, to be able to earn that degree, you also had to go, you had to take classes at the community college. Talk about, about that breakdown and what that looked like.
Yes, so 51% of my credits had to be from the college, Westmoreland County Community College itself. And then 49% of those credits could be through the school with their college and high school courses. So I think overall, I actually took 46% of my, all of my college credits at school, and then I took the other percent at WCCC itself. So I did that through a lot of online courses. Some of them had Zoom meetings I could meet when I had free time, but most of it was just like online courses throughout the years.
Is she the first graduate?
And she is the first, in my time, in my 10 years. I don't know what happened before that.
I think you are the first.
You were the first student to accomplish that. And that was actually one of our goals, was with your class, to have the first person graduate with two degrees. And so.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ethan, you got the good news? Any other good news?
Well, we'll let the program keep rolling, because I know, looking around the seats here, there is, there is more good news coming.
There's a lot more good news coming tonight.
I know, I need more from you.
So next up, I'm actually going to introduce our robotics team. We'll turn it over to them, and they're going to talk about this year's robot, the competition, and some of the great things that they're doing.
Did you bring it?
Hi, I'm Roy from the high school robotics team, and we're going to talk to you a little bit today about what we do.
Hi, I'm John. I'm a junior. I've been involved with the robotics team and like on the roster for four years at this point. And I'm the vice president at this point.
Hi, I'm James. I'm, sorry, I'm a software, and I've been on the team for three years, and I'm the secretary. So who are we? We are the robotics team from the high school. We compete in an organization called FIRST, and it focuses on inspiring young people to be science, technology leaders, and innovators. So what do we do? So we, we, in the spring, or actually, in January, we get, FIRST announces a game to us, and then in the spring, we compete in that game. And to do that, we build a robot. So we do it through the steps of brainstorming, designing, prototyping, building, and wiring it, and programming it. And while doing that, we learn useful skills that can be applied in many different career paths. So to start off the season, FIRST announces the game to us, and we are able to start thinking of our design and brainstorming. And this year, actually. This year, the game is called Charged Up, and there's two different game pieces. So the first one is this yellow cone, it's pretty small, but, and the other one is this inflatable, like, cube. So these are kind of challenging pieces to pick up, especially the cube, because it's such a weird shape, or the cone, sorry, because it's such a weird shape. So we have to pick these up and put them on the pegs or the platforms. And at the end of the game, there's like a teeter totter to balance the robot on. Once we, once we get the game, we're able to start, and brainstorm, we're able to start taking those ideas and testing them in reality. So we use cardboard and wood and some, like, metal, it's not a little bit of metal, to start prototyping them. And at that point, some of, some of the ideas make it, some of them don't. By that point, we start building the robot out of metal. So we use mostly aluminum to build the robot. And yeah, that's pretty important, because if you didn't build the robot, you wouldn't have a robot. So, yeah.
Well, Build Team is doing their thing. Obviously, we have motors and stuff to make all the moving parts move. So what the wiring team does is we figure out what we need to make the robot move and how to put it all together with the layout that Build has given us.
And so the last portion, which is the part I kind of lead throughout the team, is programming the robot. So once we have it built and everything wired up, we actually need the robot operate, or else, you know, it's just a fancy statue. So we go through the process. And like, it's kind of hard at the beginning of the season, when we don't have a robot, to start programming it. So we have to do a little bit of imagining of what the robot will look like. And then soon, we actually upload the code to the robot, and it's a lot of testing, revising, and things like that. So then, the fun part comes at the end of the year, and that's actually competing. And so, simple terms of what we do, it's, it's robot sports. We get up, put on two teams of, we, we'll put on teams of three and face against another team of three, paired with random schools. So what we've actually, we do this every year, and we go to different places, Ohio, states around us, and we're able to compete in a couple of regional competitions. And then like the first place teams in those competitions are hopefully able to go to Worlds. So you can see some images of us actually competing up there. So during the actual competition, we only have four people who aren't from the team who actually get to drive the robot around. We have two drivers, a coach, and a human player. And then there's also a technician, in case something breaks mid-match that we need to fix. So last year was actually, and during the offseason, I was driver, James was the driver, and Roy was our coach during the offseason. And then last year, Kalinda, a senior, was our coach, and our human player was Elizabeth Dudley, who couldn't make it today.
So a quote that we hear often in the First community is, "We're not using kids to build robots, we're using robots to build kids." And that was said by a First founder, Dean Kamen. And as cheesy as the quote may seem, what it means is that throughout the build season and offseason, kids learn and utilize leadership skills, time management skills, teamwork and self-control, communication skills, project management, small business skills, and they get to be eligible for over $80 million in First scholarships. And here, we have some of the pictures of things we've gone to, some outreach stuff. On the left is an offseason competition that we were finalists for. We are standing with our two alliance partners that we became good friends with along the way. And, sorry, thank you. On the right, we went to a Pirates game with other teams in our area to, like, show off our robots. And then here, we're at, in our school district. So the outer two pictures, we're at the middle school. The Sal teachers were wonderful, and they put together a little mini robotics competition with Lego Mindstorm robots with some of the schools around us. And we judged and helped, like, fix the kids' robots. And then the middle picture, with the intermediate school, what they were doing is they had these little, like, gingerbread houses that they got to build, and then they had, like, robotics kits with very, very basic parts that they got to make things, like, spin and light up. And here's some of the other stuff that we've done. We were at the talent show last year. That was ran by the high school's NHS program. They were helping raise money for Ukraine. The field day demos down at the intermediate and primary schools, the Stream Expo, the Club Fair, the Bonfire, the middle school robot competition, which you just saw, and the coding event at the intermediate school. And, if it'll load. There we go. This is one of our favorite ones. This is us making a half-court shot at the intermediate school.
So we spent all year working on this, and obviously, at the end of the year. So we wanted to show off some of the things that we actually did throughout the last season. And it was a somewhat difficult season for our team, and like, you know, we're coming out of COVID. We didn't have too many members last year. Like, I know personally, I was more or less the only programmer on the team, and it's a lot for a couple, like, few students to handle, but we did really well, considering coming out more or less fresh after all of that chaos. So at the Mahoning Valley Robotics Competition, we were able to get the best endgame award, and we were finalists. That was the offseason competition you saw recently. And the best endgame award was kind of important to us, because it was one part of our robot that was, it was verified to be like the best out of everyone who showed up. And so hopefully, this year, with the more students that have joined, and we're all experienced now, we'll be able to make every part of our robot the best part of the robot, and then we'll hopefully be able to go to Nationals. We are quarterfinalists at the Curiosity Open, and semifinalists at the Greater Pittsburgh Regional, and again, quarterfinalists at the Smoky Mountain Regional. So it's sort of, although we weren't able to make it to Nationals this year, we were, we consistently placed at all events. And since not really, all of our team now has experience this year, we're no longer fresh out of COVID, and we have a lot more members, we'll be able to hopefully do better this year. There's another video here. This was another video from our actual competition. It's of our robot and another robot that was on our alliance climbing, and you're actually able to see something the robot does that we can't really demonstrate here. So that was one of the elements from last year. We had to climb, like, these horizontal monkey bars, which obviously, we can't bring all the way in here to show to you. So we wanted that video in there, just so you could see what the arms on the robot are actually for. And so now, build season actually started right now, oh, sorry. Build season started right now. It starts in January, when we get the game, and we, we're kind of moving past the brainstorming phase, and now we're actually constructing parts of the robot, programming and all of that. And now, we have some competitions that we know the dates of this year. So we'll be going to Finger Lakes in Rochester, New York, from like the 15th to the 8th. And then we'll be doing the Pittsburgh Regional, obviously, from the 5th to the 8th at the convention center downtown. And hopefully, if we place good there, we'll be able to go to Nationals in Houston this year. That's obviously the goal. And so we also, throughout that, and after that, we do presentation demos at different places. I'm pretty sure we're planning on going to, like, an additional preseason, like, demo game, to actually be able to test before we go to actual competition. So we'll be doing, we'll be pretty busy in the next couple of months.
So, well, our robot, it takes a lot of parts to make. So obviously, it's a new one. And so it take, we, one of our goals is to be able to keep a robot, or keep our previous robots. So to do that, we need more part, or, we would like more parts, because in past years, we've had to take apart the previous year's robot and use those parts on the other ones. And it's cool for stuff like this, to have a robot to be able to demo to you guys. So again, for demos and stuff, we like to go to outreach events, and it's cool to have a robot. And so for people in the community, please invite us to go to demos. We'll almost always say yes. And it's fun to see people's faces when they see a robot do cool things and see that teenagers built it. So here are participant, participant breakdowns. We have 37 members. We have about a 50-50 between male and female students. And then we have the students in pretty much all the different grades. And then for our mentors, we have 12 mentors. We have our two lead mentors here with us tonight, Mr. Vincent and Mrs. Fieran. Thank you. And I just want to give a big thank you to the school. Obviously, you gave us our new workshop, which is a lot better than Mr. Vincent's basement, other than against Mr. Vincent. But it gives us, gives us space to build the robot and learn. So recently, we've been having all the work done in the other room, in the kitchen area with all the tools. But then we still have the programmers and wiring team be in the other room, working out stuff, and still be able to hear themselves think. And also, I'd like to thank the Panther Foundation for equipping our, our new workshop with nice tools. And if you want to contact us, we have our, our website, which has our email on it, and there's a QR code to our website there. I think at this point, we can take questions? Yeah, turn on the robot. It's going to take for a minute for that to turn on, so does anybody have questions?
First off, I want to, you guys are so great at presenting. I, you have a passion for this. It's so much fun to, for the students to come and present to what you, what you all are doing. And I work in IT, and we always work in teams, and we have, like, specialties. Do you all have specialties? It seems like there's a programming.
Yeah. Yeah, so we have different sub-teams. We don't always, like, have, like, everybody's on a certain team, you can do whatever you want. But the three of us kind of have specialties, so I normally work in build, John normally is.
And what are some of the biggest challenges you've encountered, other than maybe funding?
Well, I mean, I don't know.
Coming out of COVID, lack of team members. A lot of new people. Again, like, I was more or less the only programmer last year, so that was a struggle. But like, this year, we have a whole host of new students who got interested in it, basically, from our performance last year and some of the demos we did. We have a lot of new students coming up that say they're interested. So like, that's, we're hoping that continues to increase moving forward.
Yeah, and on the students thing, we're kind of, our team's 11 years old at this point, so we're starting to get the students that saw us do these demos in elementary school are now joining the team. So it'll be cool to see those people continue to join us, which is.
Thirty-seven, the highest number you've ever had?
No.
Well, you're kind of like pre-COVID before that.
I think we were around 40 originally, but COVID.
Pre-COVID?
Yeah. Yeah.
And how, how many man-hours go into getting to finished product?
So last year, recorded, we don't always mark down our hours, we had over 1,500 student hours, plus there were always two workshops, or two mentors in the workshop, so a bunch of volunteer hours.
Yeah, I know, like, James and I both individually. Yeah, I know, like James and I both individually, we had like over 150 hours each that we marked down. So it gets, depending on like, again, students commit however much they want. But it gets pretty, if you get into it, you get a lot of hours in. Yeah.
And I really want to thank your sponsors for keeping this program going. This is so worthwhile. This is, this is the future.
You guys are the future. In case you don't pay a lot of attention to the workplace today where you can't get people that want to work, I'm finding that a lot of places are replacing human beings with robots. I've seen robots moving up and down aisles. I would highly suggest other students, you should try to recruit them. Do you guys cross-work with each other to try to learn a little bit about each one instead of just being a specialty? Do you try to, each of you interact and share? Because you really should do that because it's really a team that'll make all of it. The big question I have is, we're looking at a piece of finished metal. Where do you get all this stuff and how long does it take? And who's the brains behind creating the new robot that you want to build?
So mostly, the brains. Most of the ideas come from the students. And the mentors kind of like refine them, say like, this is what will actually work. But most of the ideas come from the students.
Yeah, sadly, hovercraft got turned down.
Yeah.
See, that's, that's incredible because that's showing the human mind of you folks as young people, putting your brain together to create something that can actually function. But this is the future. So keep pursuing it and good luck to all of you, what you do.
Do you like to see it run?
Yes.
Which controller is which? I'm doing that one. That's which it does. Yeah, that's. It's a little loud right now. That's the compressor. It takes a second. Then once that's done, you'll be able to see it drives around. And then it should be able to shoot a ball. You got to pay attention. It can shoot a lot higher than that, but obviously, you know, a little bit of safety in here. You see, it drives around and then if you show up the arms. Oh. And then those are the arms that we used for the climb. So they're able to lift up this extremely heavy robot. Okay, and that's the intake. Obviously, we're able to pick up the balls off the floor throughout the game and then we can shoot them back out. And that's the general gist of like everything we do for the game. A couple of other things, the robot has a vision system equipped. So if you look on the top there, you'll see like green lights on there. And throughout the field, there's these reflective pieces of tape. So the vision, the robot itself is able to look for reflective tape with that green light and is able to like aim itself at the goal, which was, we're actually refining that this year even more because they added like these new April Tag QR code type things on the field. So our robot should be able to find like its full 3D position based on the field. And that's something you can't really see on the robot, obviously. Any questions?
I do have a question on the robots. I've seen a lot of them in warehouse facilities. What gives a robot its eyes so that it can tell that a human being or something's in front of it? So it would know to stop and not run into somebody?
Yeah, so that's, that's more or less, if you look, we have two cameras on this robot. Not anymore. We had two cameras on this robot for competition, which is obviously why we can't like demo vision or stuff for you today. But then what we have is we have actually two pieces of code that run on the robot. On the robot itself, we have the code for controlling it and autonomous tasks like that. Then we have a separate piece of code, which we put on the Raspberry Pi, and that's our vision code. So what we generally, what we're doing this year is we have this piece of software called Photon Vision, which does some of the hard work extrapolated for us. But we're able to detect the images of like the QR codes this year. And then it, we were able to get like coordinates of those and we can actually operate the coordinates of the robot from that. And then last year, what we had was more simplistic. There was just reflective sheets of light. So what we did is we found all the green pixels in the image and we're able to average their position to be say, hey, that's where the goal is. And then we could turn towards it. So it's that, I mean, and for human faces, it's just that, but a lot more processing power than you can put on a tiny Raspberry Pi.
We talk a lot about the five Cs. Critical thinking, creativity, communication, collaboration, and citizenship. Your work tonight demonstrates all five. Talk to me about how you feel this experience has prepared you for success in the future? And how you incorporate those five elements into what you do?
So a lot of what we learn in school is, it's great, but we need a way to apply it, obviously. And what we learn in school can be applied to what we do here. And I think being able to do things hands-on really helps students like figure out what they want to do, figure out how to do it. And obviously, we do that with all the five Cs because in the, in the work field, you work with other people, you have problems you need to overcome and things like that.
My next question is this. Which has benefited you more in preparing you for the future? Your activity or your engagement in robotics and hands-on, minds-on learning? Or the Keystone exams?
I don't think I should answer that.
Please do.
Be honest.
Please do.
Be honest.
Definitely robotics.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's sort of like the example, what you see in physics a lot is when you're solving problems for physics, you'll ignore air resistance or ignore fiction. And that information still applies to the real world, but you can't always use it exactly as you're taught it. And then going to robotics, like especially for the climb, we had to calculate how high those arms had to be and the point of rotation for the robot of how we would climb. And then those types of things help you translate from what you learn in the classroom to how it won't always work exactly like that in the real world and how to make it work and actually apply it to a finished product.
And I think a lot in the classroom, you're looking for like one specific answer. But in robotics, there's no real right way to do things, you know? Like, I mean, sometimes there is because we have to do things safely and make sure it works. But, you know, there's no right way to solve a challenge. There's no right way to do the game. So we are really allowing students to like embrace their creativity in the STEM community to make something that can apply to the real world.
It's interesting that you say that because one of the conversations I hear around my own house on the weekends when people are working on homework is this is stupid. I don't, I don't want to have to find out multiple ways to solve this math problem. There's just one, one right answer and I only need to know one way to solve it. Correct? But the reality is when you go out in the world, there are multiple ways to get to that, that answer. And the deeper, the deeper you have, deeper of an understanding that you have of the, of the process, the more likely you are to take it and apply it into solving the real world problems that you're talking about. And so listening to you talk invigorates me. And I know that every person in the room, especially those who went to school for education, this is what we went for. And so thank you for your work. And when we look at you and the people that we talked to, talked to before, if you don't have hope for the future, but when you listen to, to these younger people, then, you know, I don't know what brings that. Because I, I know when I was at high school, I wasn't, I was not doing the things that you're doing. Keep collaborating, keep doing what you're doing. And I'm going to tell you, there's an awful lot to be said for the programming. That's the brains behind all that. You guys should inter, inter-share with each other different things, but don't discount understanding the programming because there's a lot of value to that. Because a lot of people can do a lot of stuff, but not a lot of people can do the programming, right? Thank you.
I'd like to thank all your sponsors, too. Great job.
I also think we need to bring, bring you to the Panther Foundation and let you present to that board as well. I think it's important that they see.
Be happy to do that.
I think that it's important that they see the reward of, of your work and their investment as well as the potential for future investment. So that way, you don't have to cannibalize the robots.
Totally sad.
One more question, and it goes back to cannibalizing the robot. How much is that robot? How much money do you think that robot costs?
So if we were to build it from the ground up, buying all new parts, I think the answer is somewhere $5,000? Under, under, about max $5,000.
And how many robots do you, do you build one robot?
We build one a year, yeah.
About $5,000, give or take.
Yeah, and if we were to like get, there are like more advanced parts and stuff, it would be more, but we don't have the funding to do that at the moment.
Can you create a proposal that would say if you, the robot that you want to build, I mean, within certain reasonable constraints? Can you build a proposal and bring that, share that with us?
I think we could do that.
I think we have.
Could you do that?
We have one pretty close.
It's not having in one of our documents somewhere.
Yeah.
I encourage anyone, if you have a chance, now it's at the David L. Lawrence Convention Center. If you have the chance to go down and watch this competition, it is my favorite day of the year in terms of my own field trips. Because when we go down there, not only do I get a great fish sandwich at the end of the day when I'm on my way home, but most importantly, I get to watch students from across the region, actually across the country, compete and collaborate. And the whole piece of different teams have different needs and run into different problems during the competition. And they have to work together and they seek other people and people are happy to help. They're jumping in and helping the competition solve their mechanical issues and their strategic issues. And it's that cross-team collaboration and cooperation and then the alliances that form that really demonstrates the highest levels of citizenship and competition. There's a lot of brain power in that arena that day. But it is fun to watch. It's competitive, yet has a positive spirit to it. So I encourage you on April 5th, 6th, 7th, or 8th, or 6th, 7th, and 8th, to get down to the David L. Lawrence Convention Center and check things out because I know I'll be there.
I wouldn't recommend coming the first day because that's when all the issues are. Give us a day to work it out first.
Yeah.
That's the best day.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Pryor, next.
Next up, I have Dr. St. Lamont and Ms. Berg. They're going to be talking about some of the things happening at the middle school, from PBIS to the parent conversation series.
I can't promise you that we will be as exciting, but I can promise you, you will not have to look at your phone as much to look up the words that we're using. So what we want to talk about today is give you a little update on our PBIS, our Positive Behavior Incentives and Supports Program at the middle school. And this is something that we started last year in the training for and the creation of. And we felt that it was important in working with Dr. Rogalski and Mrs. DeFulvio. We thought it was really important at the middle school to get this started. And so last year, we put a team of teachers together and we met with some trainers from the intermediate unit. And we, we came up with all of the things that we wanted to focus on at the middle school. And so when we sat down and we sat down with our teachers, we put out a survey and we got a lot of information about what we thought our needs were. So we did a needs assessment. And then following that needs assessment, we came up with just a solid focus on what we wanted to. And so we came up with our, what we called pride, our Panther pride, purpose, respect, integrity, dependability, and empathy. And then the areas in which we wanted to focus on those. And those are some things that also came from the trainers, some ideas that came from the trainers. So focusing on the bus, in the cafeteria, the hallway, the learning environment, and the restrooms. And when we sat down to do all of this, we thought about what does purpose look like in the hallways, in the cafeteria, on the buses? What is your purpose for being there? And, you know, in the hallways, things like walk on the right side of the hallway, keep the hallway clean, you're going from one place to the next. If you're looking at respect, you know, respecting the people around you and being kind in the hallways and keeping your area around your locker clean so people aren't tripping. And what does integrity look like? Well, it's using your own locker and not using someone else's locker. And following those technology guidelines in the hallways, so not staring at your phone as you're walking down the hallway, but keeping it put aside. You know, what does empathy look like in the hallway? Using kind words and being respectful and of one another. And that kind of stretched to all of the locations, you know, cleaning up after yourself in the cafeteria. And when you're on the bus, going to your seat, staying in your seat, keeping your area clean, making sure you throw away any garbage, following all of those rules. And so those are the things that we came up with. And then we sat down and talked about how we could get this and how we could present this to all of the students. And so the teachers, we have a group of teachers that worked really hard. We also have a parent representative with Mrs. Helbig. And we sat down all, all school year and we put these together. And then we met all summer and we, we focused it a little bit more and came up with how now are we going to get this out? And so there were a couple of ways. We have lessons in the classroom, which we're going to talk a little bit more about. And then the next thing we're going to talk about is how, just some extra things that we wanted to do for the students and the parents. And so we started with the help of Ms. Frederick and Officer Potter, our parent and community lecture series. And the first person that we had come was in July and it was Phil Little, who is from the District Attorney's Office. And he came and spoke with the parents about internet and phone safety. And then we invited Corporal Aaron Allen in, who also spoke with the parents, but then also spoke with the students in school and talked about bullying and cyberbullying and cell phone responsibility. And all of those things that we're really seeing now, some things that parents should look for on cell phones, some things that the students, you know, he spoke from experience with, you know, here are some things that, you know, I had to work with, with other students. These are things that could get you in trouble. These are things that you shouldn't do and here's how you should do it. And we also had another guest speaker come in. He was an, he's a retired MMA fighter, Charlie the Spaniard Brenneman, and also was a teacher and an MMA fighter. And he talked to our students about kindness and compassion, hard work, perseverance. Came up to the cafeteria afterwards, took pictures with every student that wanted to take a picture with him, let him, he let them hold his belt. It was, it was a pretty neat experience. As far as this Let's Talk About It series, here's what we have coming up. So we just wanted to put a plug out for this because we think it's important and we want parents to come and to see this. On Wednesday of this week, we have Ruth Harper coming in and she's going to talk about raising a competent eater and looking at a balanced approach amid our culture's preoccupation with food and body and what that looks like. And then in February, we have Ms. Cara Kelly, who is going to present. And she is going to talk about student anxiety and stress and what is healthy and what isn't and all those important things. And then moving on into March, we're going to talk about vaping. And a couple of years ago, we did this and we're going to do it again, but they set up a mock bedroom and told parents what to look for. Here's where to look at things. Here's how to find things if your kids are hiding things. And you come in and this, this whole bedroom is set up and it shows you exactly what you need to look for. And so those are the different ways that we are reaching out to parents and reaching out to students. And so again, we sat down, we talked about what are some ways that we want to reach our students? And so all of the teachers took an area, the hallway, the bus, the cafeteria, and then they used that pride and worked together on how can we reach and how can we get the students to understand this? And so once we did that and we did our first section of teaching and lessons and how to do it, then the incentives part came in. So what can we do to incentivize this, to get them excited about it? And I'm going to let Ms. Berg take over and talk about that.
So I like to think of this as our acknowledgement phase. So now, any adult who comes into contact with kids throughout their day, whether it's teachers, the bus drivers, cafeteria workers, custodians, when they see our students really exemplifying those Panther pride qualities, they give our students a ticket. And it says on there why they got it, you showed respect in the hallway. And the person giving them the ticket says, this is what I saw you do, this is why you earned a ticket. Our students then can use those tickets to try to win a gift card. And these are given away at the end of each nine weeks. Our PTO very generously donates them to us. In addition, we have quite a few other things that we do during the nine weeks for our kids. For example, tomorrow, they don't know this yet, but any student who has earned a ticket so far, the first week of the third nine weeks, is going to get called down tomorrow and they get free ice cream during lunch. During Friday, we're going to have our fine dining experience. And eight kids per grade level are going to eat at a special table with real dishes and. And eight kids per grade level are going to eat at a special table with real dishes and linens, and they're going to be served a special meal by their teachers. Last time, some administrators showed up, and it was just a really nice way to acknowledge them in front of all of their peers. So here's just some pictures of our kids enjoying some of the different rewards that they've earned. And even though we're doing all of this, we would love to say that 100% of our students are now making the absolute best decision and best choice throughout their day, every single day of the school year. 98% of them are. The students who need a little bit of reteaching, when they come into the office with us, if you look at the next one, we try to focus our conversations with them around these three big questions of what they should be doing. Do they understand those expectations? And after this conversation, do they understand what they need to do moving forward? This Thursday, we're going to be having a school-wide activity where students are going to work with members of their homeroom on a little reteaching. So if you look at the next one, one of our teachers, Dr. Allison, came up with this. So kids are going to work in groups, and they're going to let us have some honest feedback, I hope. With, for example, the cafeteria, what do you see that's going well in there? What do we still need to work on? And what are your suggestions for how we get to where we need to be? Because at this point, you've heard all of the adults' opinions and what we think we should be doing, but we want to get some feedback from our students. And then finally, we look at this as we are halfway through our first year with Panther Pride. And we are collecting so much really good data that we're going to use moving forward to make even better informed decisions. But more than that, we have rewarded so many kids, and we have acknowledged so many kids that otherwise probably would not be getting shout-outs. And they are because they're just coming to school, and they're doing exactly what we want them to be doing. And they know that we see them and that we appreciate their efforts.
And then, you know, we're just, again, like she said, we're collecting the data. We look at the data all the time to see where we can improve. One of the things that we found is that we had, you know, a certain group of students that were doing certain things. And so we worked with Ms. Kelly, and she was pushing into some of the classrooms to work with the teachers on that citizenship piece, as well as the academic piece, kind of in real time, at the same time. And so some really great things have been coming out of this, some new stuff that we're trying. And we're just very excited to see the students participating in this.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
For the parents who can't attend the video series, or not the video series, that's my question. Can they watch it on video or?
So we try to record most of them, and we send it out through email to, to all of our parents.
Is it on the website?
We can upload it to the website.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's great. You guys are doing a great job. Thank you very much. Next.
And finally, and finally, last but not least, in front of you are gifts from some of our students. It is School Board Director Recognition Month. And what a lot of people don't realize is the number of hours that you put in to this role. And it is truly community service. It's a service that you provide to the community that oftentimes is thankless. And obviously, you get the tough end of this and having to make some pretty, pretty tough decisions. And some great decisions for, for our kids in our community. And so as a token of that, of their appreciation, some of our students at the intermediate school made you some, some pots with, or flower pots with, with a card. And in that card, they made the paper, are actually seeds. And so you can plant that, and it's in there for you. But the reality is, people think school board members get paid, and the reality is, you don't. You don't get a dime for what you do. And from my standpoint, when we talk about citizenship, agreeing to serve your community in this capacity is truly an act of citizenship. So thank you for, for what you do.
Somebody did stop me this morning and ask how much we got paid.
Somebody did.
They were thinking about running for school board because of it. It might cost you money, but we don't get paid.
So 27, or three minutes short of an hour, the longest superintendent's report in history. I now turn it over to you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to public comments. The first one is Helen Elliott.
Good evening and Happy New Year. And all I have to say is that I, I read the book that was proposed at the, at the policy meeting, no curriculum meeting, policy meeting, whichever one it was, policy meeting. Curriculum meeting, whichever one it was. And it, and it was very good, and I, and I highly recommend it. It was very good reading. So I'm all for it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for reading the book. Okay, Kristy Troutman.
Hi, I'm Kristy Troutman. I live at 4043 Sloanwood Drive in Murraysville, and I have a daughter in the 10th grade. And just kudos, that is the best, most engaged, most inspiring school board meeting and superintendent's report I've ever heard. Clearly, this is a district that is focused on excellence. And clearly, you all as volunteers, as administrators, as faculty and parents are doing a remarkable job of creating a district where so many of our students thrive in extraordinary ways. I'm grateful. I feel like my daughter is thriving here as well. So the reason I'm doing public comment is that in reading through the agenda, I saw the bullying policy. And it occurs to me that one of the things that leaders do is look for gaps. Where is it that we have commitments and beliefs in what should be? And what actually happens falls a little short. And leaders focus on closing those gaps. So I live in this district because of the schools. I wouldn't live in Murraysville otherwise. And the extraordinary accomplishments that we saw tonight have been consistent the whole time that I've lived here. And the whole time that I've lived here, I've also heard rumors and stories of students and families who don't feel welcome, who don't feel accepted, who don't feel included, and who don't feel safe. And so I read the policy that you're going to be talking about in a few minutes. It seems like a fine policy. Like, I got nothing better on the policy. But clearly, policy is only one piece of addressing issues like school climate. And so I just want to be on record in saying how important I think it is that we not stop until every student is thriving in the way that the students we saw here tonight are. Clearly, the presentation we just saw of things that are happening in the middle school about school climate is really important steps. I know there's plenty of other things that the district is doing related to bullying. But just here to ask you to take a second, comprehensive look at are there other opportunities? In post-secondary education, there's best practices around anonymous reporting, around like school climate surveys, around student leadership in identifying and solving problems. Obviously, what works in a post-secondary environment, what works in elementary school and high school are different things. I'm not an educator. I don't know what those things are. But as we think about leadership for the students in our community, I hope that that's one of the things that you'll continue to really prioritize. So we're not leaving any students behind. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. Okay, that's the end of public comment. Solicitors' comments, everything, Joe?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move into consent agenda items. Ms. Cow, you're up first.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For your approval tonight, I have the current list of the A.J. Myers &amp; Sons Bus Drivers and Van Drivers. And also tonight, I have the current list of the updated bus stops.
Any questions for Ms. Cow for bus driver and bus stops? Thank you. Okay, we're going to go to the election of FRSP Representative for the WIU Board of Directors. Tracy Ramey is our candidate, and I'm assuming she wants to stay? Yes? Anybody have any objections to that? I nominate Tracy Ramey.
That's next meeting.
Pardon? Yeah, okay. You're going to be a candidate. All right. Ms. Velva, you're up. Where are you going to go?
Good evening. My first agenda item is the Catch My Breath Vaping Prevention Program. Ms. Cara Kelly is here as one of the representatives from University of Pittsburgh MAPS program. She is one of our, she's our six to 12 social services liaison. And she is here if you have any questions about the program. It will be a preventative program as well as a reaction program to any vaping discipline that occurs in our district. It is a small group program that allows students to work with Ms. Kelly directly on a research-based program around helping students really understand the effects of vaping. And the, any participation in that program will require parent involvement as well as their approval. And we hope to see that program in time to include parent education for all parents and students across the district. Ms. Kelly is available if you have any questions specifically.
Any questions? Okay, next, Rockets and Safety.
Our next item is presented by Officer Scoog and myself. It is the NASRO Activity Book for the K-2 students. And it is endorsed by the, am I going to get this right? National Association of School Resource Officers? I did it. It's a lot of letters. And we have looked at that activity book in Curriculum Committee, and we're excited to be able to use that. I did not mention that the Catch My Breath Vaping Prevention Program does not have a cost, and there is a low cost for our activity books. I believe that's listed in your agenda. Officer Scoog, can I answer any questions about that as well?
Any questions? Any comments, Mr. Scoog? Okay, thank you. All right. Now we're up to you, Mr. Sonny.
My next agenda item is the conceptual physics course at the senior high school. I will not attempt to explain that at all. But I will mention that when the students from the robotics team were speaking about applied physics, it really made a lot of sense based on what Mr. Sonny was telling us about this course and how this really would reach a lot of students who want to put physics into action, which I wish I had been able to do in high school. Mr. Sonny can answer any questions you might have? Mr. Suvak would also.
Questions for Mr. Sonny on physics?
I just think we need to add, a lot of what we learned about this course too is to touch all students, as we talked about before. And a lot of students shy away from physics because of the math involvement in it. And if they're not really high in math or looking towards engineering, they steer away from it. This course actually would do the opposite. It would open it up for all students to want to get an idea into physics, which also could lead to an interest in robotics and other avenues that we just talked about this evening as well. So I think it's a, I just want to add that as well.
I'd like to add something too, that this doesn't replace our current physics program. This is in addition to, like Mr. Karimsky said, to get more students involved, and especially students that, like you said, would not normally take, would not normally take physics that could lead to, you know, operating some kind of machine in vocational ed, which would be very beneficial. So I hope people take a look at that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, 30-day approval, 7th grade.
The next agenda item is, we are seeking your approval to put the novel for 7th grade English course. The novel is called Fever 1793, and we're looking for your approval to put that on 30-day review. It would then go for approval on the March agenda because the February agenda would not have 30 days in between this and the February meeting.
Anybody have any questions on the novel? Thank you. Okay, you're done. John, Mr. Perry. Diesel and gasoline.
Good evening. The first item that I have for you tonight is the awarding of diesel and gasoline fuel bids. The WIU Joint Purchasing Committee solicited and received a third round of fuel bidding. This covering the period of January 2023 through June of 2023. As we had hoped, the prices, while still elevated, are lower than what the previous two rounds came in at. So diesel fuel was awarded to petroleum traders at a price of $3.5143 per gallon, and gasoline at a price of $3.079 per gallon. You might recall, the beginning of this school year, the first round of bidding covering the period July through September, diesel was at $4.61 and gasoline was at $3.91. So we made smaller buys in the first two rounds. So overall, our blended rate for diesel this year was about $3.63, and gasoline was at $3.21. So I think we did about as well as we could in a challenging environment. Both of these, the diesel and the unleaded gasoline, was awarded to petroleum traders.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions? Gifts, grants, and donations?
This month, we have $107 from FR staff to the Fund-A-Meal Program, and $4,000 from the United Way of Southwestern Pennsylvania, continuing to support kindergarten transition activities.
Questions on gifts and grants?
And finally, this month, we have budget transfers for the general fund totaling $7,965.78.
Questions on budget transfers?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Perry. Mr. Delp.
Good evening, everyone.
Pennsylvania.
The first item I bring to you on the agenda is the affiliation agreement with Penn West University. This is in reference to our student teachers and field service teachers that we have an agreement with this university.
Any questions on Pennsylvania Western University? You're still up, Karen.
The second and third items that I bring to you are very much related. They are college and high school articulation agreements that we have with LaRoche University and the University of Pittsburgh. These two agreements are retroactive, actually, to the beginning of the 2022-23 school year. So this is already in place and in cooperation with these two universities. And this, these are agreements that we renew annually.
Any questions? Okay, University of Pittsburgh.
Yeah, I do have a question. I'm sorry. Let me find it here. I don't know if I should ask it now or during the other. On the, what is it? The letter? It's on course number nine on page six. It's the Race, Class, and Gender Intro to Sociology. Can you give me what, some background on what that exactly is?
As for the specifics with respect to the curriculum, the course being taught, I would have to do some research on that on my own and bring that to you, if I certainly could do that.
Thank you.
Dr. Delp, is that, that's a course that's already being taught here, or is that a new one?
It is. It's already being taught here.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, University of Pittsburgh?
The course, is that an elective?
That would be an elective, yes.
Thanks.
The next item on the agenda are with respect to the policy review, the first read. We have a number of policies that we are bringing to you this evening. The first two policies are in regard to our public meetings and satisfy the sunshine laws. They are practices that we already had in place, and we were simply revisiting the policy themselves, both policies themselves. That is Policy Zero Zero Six and Zero Zero Six dash BOG Zero. It's in recognition and putting into an updated version of our policies to reflect the practices that allow us to post our meetings and agendas.
Any questions on the policy? Okay, personnel agenda.
Wait, wait, wait.
There are a number more.
Go through each of the policies?
Would you like me to go through these policies?
Well, there were a couple that I wanted to learn more about.
Absolutely, yes, that was my intent, I was going to go down to the next one. The next policy is the extracurricular participation by home education students. The change that was made to this one was with respect to recognizing J R O T C as something that homeschooled students would be able to participate in. That was the only change to that policy. Any questions on that one? The next policy, Policy One Fifty, Comparability of Services. This had to do with food services and an update to our food services policy. And we prioritize this as we were also going through a first food services audit this year. So we wanted to also revisit that, that policy as well.
Any questions? Next one.
Policy Two Four Six, School Wellness. This was a requirement by federal law to revisit this policy with respect to school entities participating in federal nutrition programs. So this again was connected to the previous policy with respect to our food services audit.
Questions on school wellness? Okay, Two Forty-Nine.
The next policy, Policy Two Four Nine, is in regards to bullying and cyberbullying.
Are you recommending any changes in that?
I am gonna. Specifically, the reason why we looked at this policy was, it is a mandated policy. It was revised to include a statement that directs staff to report the student to the threat assessment team. So the major change to this policy is a student who may be participating in a bullying, cyberbullying act would be recommended to a threat assessment team that is required now by districts.
Any questions on bullying? Okay, next.
Policy Eight Oh Eight, Food Services, yet again. It was packaged in the food services policies. And assuming no questions on that. Policy Nine Oh Three is public participation in board meetings. Specifically with this particular policy, is recommended to assist again with the compliance of the Sunshine Act to make sure that we have reviewed that policy specifically as it relates to public participation in meetings.
Any questions on Policy Nine Oh Three? Thank you for the policy. Okay, you're not done, you got personnel now.
I'm not done yet. Perhaps the largest one I've brought to you so far in my short tenure. As you will look at the certified personnel appointments and transfers, you will see the seven appointments and transfers that are listed along with the leaves and absences. You also see a number of substitutes, resignations, and retirements that we have here at the district. In addition, you'll see for under support personnel, appointments and transfers, leaves of absence, and resignations and retirements.
Any questions on personnel? I think you've got spring coaches on there too. Anybody have any questions? Scott, do you have a question?
I was just going to mention with Mr.
Mr. Ryan Smith.
With being here, give him a moment to introduce himself. Potentially. Did you have a question? Sorry, I'm sorry.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
A quick question. Number two for appointments and transfers, that, is that a new position? Or is it to fill somebody's former position?
Is this on page forty-four?
Yes.
I don't have a page number on that. Support personnel? Appointments or transfers?
It's, it's on page forty-four. You talking about Fulvio?
Yes.
This is, this is not a new position, it is filling a previously existing.
It's not a new position.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions?
Actually, just to draw the parallel for you, the position that Gina Wages was in prior to moving to the HR office, this is filling that position. Okay.
Okay, Dr. Ryan Smith, you want to come up and say a few words?
I just want to thank everyone for this amazing opportunity. You know, to see the wonderful thing that our students are doing at all levels and to see what the staff is doing at the district buildings. It's just amazing. So excited to be a part of this team. It was very important for me to bring my family to Franklin Regional. After my son's now a sixth grader, and my soon-to-be daughter will be joining kindergarten. So for me to get here as a district employee, I just, I just can't wait. This is an awesome team, this is an awesome district, awesome community, and this is something that I can finally call home, and I'm, I'm very excited about. So thank you for this opportunity, and I'm going to do everything I can to make this a great place, so thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to Franklin Regional.
Just for the record, before we get there, Dr. Smith is coming to us from Freedom, but the position he is filling is a position that was vacated when, when Ms. Fulvio became our Assistant Superintendent. So he is filling, he is moving into that role as Director of Instruction and Support Services. So welcome to Franklin Regional, we're excited to have you as part of the team.
We are excited, thank you very much. Dr. Delp, thank you, you're done. Okay, Mr. Matzie.
Good evening. First up is the security system replacement item for your approval to replace the security items on that list.
Any questions for Mr. Matzie on security system replacement? Okay, professional service.
Next, we have professional service agreement. This is for the board to authorize HHSDR Architects, Engineers to provide professional services for deconstruction of Heritage Elementary, and a final review by the district solicitor and administration. Services shall include, but not be limited to, specific design, documents as necessary, preparation and review of drawings, coordination of permits, bid packages, preparation and bid, author, I'm sorry, administration, coordination of job conference meetings, and at a fee, for professional services shall be at six percent of the project cost.
Any questions on that? Thank you very much. That's, we're going to take a little pressure off of Franklin Regional by doing it that way. Thank you. Okay, paper of record, Ms. Gillen.
Good evening, everyone. Each year, the Board of School Directors makes the determination of which local news outlet will be the official paper of record to be used to advertise our district legal notices. That would include our business department, district services, and the Office of the Superintendent. To be eligible for consideration, a newspaper must be a third party intended for general circulation, published regularly at short intervals, fall under the category of second-class period mail. Legal notices must be archival, accessible, and verifiable, and they are required to be in a paid-for and printed publication. The Penn Franklin is our current paper of record and has made a written request to continue as such. As a frame of reference, the total expenditure for publishing of legal notices is approximately two thousand dollars or less. Since the last summer, July first, we've spent just a little over five hundred dollars for the entire year of two thousand twenty-two, one thousand and thirty dollars, just to give you an idea of what that spending looks like. A comparison chart with other publication was provided, with other publications was provided in your board packet. Do you have any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gillen. Okay, number nineteen, I believe is going to be, Dr. Prano.
Is my recommendation that we remove the authorization to negotiate a purchase agreement from the consent agenda.
Any comments? Need a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting?
So moved.
Move dead?
Second.
Second, Scott. Comments, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight zero. Okay, does anybody have to take a break for a minute or anything before we move into the voting meeting? Okay. Have a good night, guys, people. All right, we're going to move into the Monday, January twenty-third Franklin Regional School Board of Directors Regular Voting Meeting. We're going to stand for salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Reading of the mission statement. We, the Franklin Regional School Community strive for excellence, learning, achievement, and citizenship in all we do. Recall Ms. Wolf.
Mrs. Alterahan?
Here.
Mr. Weinman?
Here.
Mr. Krimsky?
Here.
Mr. Mitterator?
Here.
Mr. Azalina?
Here.
Dr. Echelmann-Ramey?
Here.
Mr. Kuzlosky?
Here.
Mr. Yant? Is absent, Mr. Yingling?
Here. Okay, we've got eight present. All right, any approval for the organization meeting minutes of December fifth, two thousand twenty-two? Need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Second. Comments, hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight zero. Need a motion for committee of the whole meeting for December fifth, two thousand twenty-two, and a regular minute, minutes for December fifth, two thousand twenty-two.
So moved.
Move, Ed?
Second.
Second, Diana, comments, hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight zero. Okay, Dr. Prano, future dates.
January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, we will have the Finance Committee meeting at five PM in the administrative offices at thirty-one seventy School Road. February first, we will have a Policy Committee meeting at five PM in the administrative offices at thirty-one seventy School Road. On February eighth, two thousand twenty-three, we will have a Technology Committee meeting at five PM in the administrative offices at thirty-one seventy School Road. And on February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, we will have our committee of the whole meeting and regular board meeting at seven thirty PM here at the Marysville Municipal Building at forty-one hundred Sardis Road. Upcoming topics include policy first and second read, gifts, grants, and donations, budget transfers, and personnel. And that, Mr. President, concludes future meetings and upcoming topics.
Thank you, Dr. Prano. Okay, I need a motion to approve the Treasury Report for November and December of two thousand twenty-two.
So moved.
Moved, Vince?
Second.
Second, Scott, comments, hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight zero. List the bills, I'll just a little bit smaller print this time. Okay, paid bills, general fund, two million eight hundred and thirty-nine, thirty, eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and seventeen cents. Technology fund, zero dollars. Capital reserve fund, four thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars. Athletic fund, four thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars. Construction fund, thirty-two thousand, sixty-six dollars and forty-five cents, for total paid bills of two million, eight hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents. Unpaid bills, general fund, seven hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-six cents. Technology, zero, capital reserve fund, six thousand nine hundred dollars. Athletic fund, forty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and eight cents. Construction fund, two thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Total unpaid bills are seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-four cents, for a grand total of three million, six hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty-six cents. Food service of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, a hundred and two dollars and thirty cents, for a grand total including food service of three million, seven hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-six cents. Need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Move Diana?
Second.
Second.
Mark.
Mark. Comments, hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight zero. There are no public comments for this meeting. Solicitors' comments, I need to, Joe?
Nothing, Mr. President.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, we're going to move into consent agenda items. We have one through fifteen. Anybody have any comments?
Briefly, I do.
Yes.
I do want to take, slow down for a moment, and earlier we talked about the personnel agenda. And on the personnel agenda, there are a number of retirements. And by far, this is not the last time we're going to recognize these folks. But in that list of people are people that dedicated collectively hundreds of years to this, the youth of our community. And I think it's important that, as we welcome new people into the district, we also recognize that long-term service and dedication to students of helping generations of Franklin Regional graduates. Those people include, and Dr. Linda Brecht, fourth grade teacher at the intermediate school, Dr. Marie Romanelli, English teacher at the high school, Lori Hallett, sixth grade social studies teacher at the middle school, Dorothy Grego, or Dottie Grego, biology teacher at the high school, Laura Wurzel, counselor at the primary school, Hope Schilling, reading specialist at the primary school, and Patrice Klimchak, counselor at the primary school. Those individuals have dedicated their careers to serving Franklin Regional students and students for a long time. And so I, I think as we move forward into this, we need to take a moment to recognize who those individuals are. And I personally am grateful and indebted for their service to this organization, but most importantly, our children.
Thank you for your kind comments, appreciate it. Okay, and anybody have any other comments on consent agenda items? I need a motion to approve consent agenda items one through fifteen.
Is it possible for us to pull out eleven? The one from LaRoche University until Ms., Dr. Delp gets us more information on what the curriculum is.
You want to pull it?
Yes, can we table it? Just that one? For more information.
Do you want to make a motion to pull it?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we pull the number eleven concurrent enrollment agreement with LaRoche until we get more specific information.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it, I would like to learn more too.
Motion's moved, the seconded. Do we need a recall vote on this? Recall vote. We're pulling it for further information.
You pull first, vote on the consent agenda items, then, then you go through the motion of tabling or whatever you're looking to do. of tabling or whatever you're looking to do.
Yep.
So number 11 is being pulled from the consent agenda item.
Okay. Need a motion to approve one through 10 and 12 through 15. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second, Ed. Comments, hearing that all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries eight zero. Okay, number 11. You have a motion to pull to get further information?
Right, to table it, yes.
We have a second by Tracy.
Yeah.
My question would be, would it, would it affect the contract terms of that negatively if we tabled that to the next meeting? Because it is a yearly agreement, will that negatively affect, because there are several programs that are in that agreement, to get the, to just get the answers for that, just, that's the first thing I want to check if we're tabling that, will it affect that contract renewal negatively?
I don't believe at this time it'll have that large of an impact. The CHS course is aligned to our pre-existing sociology course. And so with these universities, when we get agreements for a CHS credit to, a university to allow credit for that, they look at curricula, and they look at curricular alignment to what we have in place as well. And so what we can go through is look at the course description and be able to bring that back to you as well. But we have an existing course in our program of studies that is titled Sociology. It is a semester course that is available to 11th and 12th grades.
Does it affect students?
I think what I was just worried about is if we don't, if we don't do approval for the contract, for the renewal of the, of the agreement this month, will that, we will be able to continue the program, correct? If it's on hold for, if it gets tabled?
That is correct.
Being approached, okay.
That's correct. Students would be currently enrolled in these classes.
And continue to be enrolled. Okay.
Are parents involved in the process? Whenever a child would enroll in that class, would they know that they're enrolling in that class?
In the schedule verification process, they would be able to see what courses their child is indeed selecting. That, that season is upon us right now. February, students are looking at their course selections for the upcoming school year, and they would be able to go into our program of studies and be able to see the course descriptions that clearly outline what the content of that course is. And as was asked earlier, this is an elective course.
Okay, any other questions? Roll call vote.
So just to be, just to clarify, the course title is the university's course title, not Franklin Regional's course title?
That is correct.
And it is Introduction into Sociology. It's just called Race, Gender, but it is an introduction into sociology.
That is correct.
Study of Cultures.
Correct, that is a soc class, yes.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, now roll call.
Is this a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Until the, I guess, the 13th of February, is our next meeting.
Roll call.
Who's the motion and who's the second?
The motion was Diana, and second by Tracy.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Ms. Alteri Hand?
Yes, excuse me, yes.
Mr. Wyman?
No, given that the parents have the ability to see what's already in there and can look at the schedules, no.
Mr. Krimsky?
Uh, no.
Mr. Mitterator?
Uh, no.
Mr. Azalina?
No.
Dr. Eshelman-Ramey?
Yes, just so we can learn more about it.
Mr. Kuzlosky?
No.
Mr. Yingling?
Thank you. You're still going to get information on that, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. All right. Now we're going to move on to...
Now you have to...
Can redo the...
Leave the vote on it.
Okay, now we need approval for consent agenda item number 11. Current enrollment agreement with LaRoche College. Need a motion?
So moved.
Move Ed. Second.
Second.
Ms. Alteri Hand?
No.
Mr. Wyman?
Yes.
Mr. Krimsky?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterator?
Yes.
Mr. Azalina?
Yes.
Dr. Eshelman-Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzlosky?
Yes.
Mr. Yingling?
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to roll call agenda items. Joint purchasing consortium for 2002, 23 gasoline and diesel fuel. Need a motion?
So moved.
Move Ed, second.
Second.
Vince? Comments, roll call vote.
Ms. Alteri Hand? Yes.
Mr. Wyman?
Yes.
Mr. Krimsky?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterator?
Yes.
Mr. Azalina?
Yes.
Dr. Eshelman-Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzlosky?
Yes.
Mr. Yingling?
Yes. Professional service agreement with Heritage Deconstruction. Need a motion?
So moved.
Move Diana?
Second.
Second, Kevin. Roll call vote.
Ms. Alteri Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Wyman?
Yes.
Mr. Krimsky?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterator?
Yes.
Mr. Azalina?
Yes.
Dr. Eshelman-Ramey?
No.
Mr. Kuzlosky?
Yes.
Mr. Yingling?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries seven to one. Authorization to negotiate a purchase agreement. Oh, I'm sorry, we tabled that. We're done. I need a motion to adjourn.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. Paper to record, I'm sorry. Sorry about that, Georgia. Need a motion to approve the paper of record.
I make a motion that we approve the Pen Franklin for a paper of record.
Motion by Ed.
Second.
Second by Diana. Comments, roll call vote.
Ms. Alteri Hand? Yes.
Mr. Wyman?
Yes.
Mr. Krimsky?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterator?
Yes.
Mr. Azalina?
Yes.
Dr. Eshelman-Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzlosky?
Yes.
Mr. Yingling?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, Mark.
Second.
Second, Scott, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Welcome back. Happy New Year, everybody.